Commissioner Asper.
Present.
Commissioner Heinzerling.
Present.
Commissioner Lamoore.
Present.
Commissioner Venzel.
Present.
Commissioner Swartout, excused. Commissioner Moore.
Present.
Commissioner Leavens.
Present.
Coram, present.
We'll now have the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Hoffman.
The flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll now have our opening prayer.
Dear Lord, please instruct us and teach us in the way that we should conduct this meeting. Please counsel us with your loving eye and let our aims in this meeting be aligned with your direction. Let our plans be orchestrated by you, Father. Let your will be done in this meeting so that this meeting can be a meeting that is based upon your desires for us. Whatever it is that you want to result from this, Lord, let it happen. Amen.
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 Now, if I could have a motion for approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Lamoore.
Second.
Supported by Heinzerling. Are there any questions on the agenda? Yes.
I just wanted to make sure that there are two different votes on our closed sessions, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other question? Mr. Graham?
Are the closed sessions staying at the end of the agenda?
Right where they're at on the agenda. It's not at the end. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Asper.
Yes.
Commissioner Heinzerling.
Yes.
Commissioner Lamoore.
Yes.
Commissioner Venzel.
Yes.
Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Commissioner Leavens.
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Now need a motion for approval of the minutes from the August 5th meeting.
So moved.
Moved by Lamoore. Supported by Hoffman. Other questions, additions?
Waive the reading.
Yes, with the reading, please.
Any corrections, additions to the minutes? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Yes.
Commissioner Asper.
Yes.
Commissioner Heinzerling.
Yes.
Commissioner Lamoore.
Yes.
Commissioner Venzel.
Yes.
Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Commissioner Leavens.
Yes.
Motion carries.
We now move into our first public comment segment. If there are citizens who wish to address the board.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Ned Burkey. Last month, I came here just to give the board an update on some issues that were in the national media and had implications for agriculture in Michigan and even Monroe County. Those included foreign ownership of farmland. Of course, the big emphasis is on China. China does own farmland in Monroe County and Mylan, London Township. The other issue was farm securities, national security and that related because two Chinese graduate students at the University of Michigan were caught by APIS, Animal Plant Health Inspection Service, with a viropathogen which, if released into the environment, could be extremely hazardous to livestock or humans. Tonight, I want to touch on briefly on some other issues. And again, these are in the media. One is dealing with prices and the economy. And headline in this issue of this paper talks about farm bankruptcies are projected to be up this year, including in Michigan. The ag economy in general, we're talking now just corn, soybeans, wheat for the Midwest. We're not talking flowers or vegetables or fruit. Those are very specialized industries. The University of Illinois projects every acre of corn will lose $115 per acre and every acre of soybeans will lose $55 per acre. The Federal Reserve issues a beige book every year on the status of the ag economy. We're in the Chicago Federal District. And for our area of the district, the farm economy is, generally speaking, on tender hooks. It is a very weak situation. Similarly, Purdue University and the Chicago Mercantile Exchange issue a monthly survey of farmer sentiment, somewhat similar to the University of Michigan consumer sentiment. And the last sentiment from that survey showed farm is weak and down on that. So just, and just as a note to Mr. Leavens, farmland values are projected to go up in Michigan by 7.8%. So you say, well, how can that happen? I can tell you, my dad's farm was spoken for 30 years before it was sold by two neighbors. So you only get a chance to buy a farm once a generation if you're lucky. And so one of those two neighbors obviously bought it. And so the price of land is irrelevant. It's only the chance to buy it. And so that's one reason that farmland values are projected to go up. The other issue that's still in the media even today deals with immigration, agriculture, and the tourism industry. And Michigan rely heavily on H-2A temporary visas for workers from other countries. And that's always been an issue with Congressman Dingle and Congressman Wahlberg, that agriculture needs more workers. It's harder to get workers. Right now, the Secretary of Agriculture is kind of emphasizing to hire American workers, but it's very difficult because a lot of produce in agriculture is still hand harvested. So that's always an issue. Last thing, quickly. Next month, the third week in September is National Farm Safety and Health Week. The emphasis this year is safety first, avoid the worst. So whenever you get a tragedy, it's terrible. A year ago, we had one farm death in Monroe County, a farmer run over by a tractor. This summer, a farmer in Lenawee County committed suicide, a very prominent farmer. So it does touch home, and it's always a tragedy for anybody. But we're going to emphasize again on National Farm Safety and Health Week. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Hi, folks. I'm Dave Emmerich. I used to be a controller for the Southern Plants for DTE. I'm recently on the opioid task force for the county. Last year, I served through a recommendation from Don on the Senior Commission on Aging. I saw on the agenda a gentleman named Predmore with a grant from FEMA. I've been playing hell trying to get the final draws from FEMA, about $80,000 for three homeowners, and I'm one of the homeowners. I've elevated 29 homes out of the flood zone in Hester Beach, only two at Luna Pier because they put more conditions on it. And Jim Gardner and I, he's the mayor down there that you probably know, don't want to deal with FEMA. So I'd like to talk to Predmore sometime to tell him the whole work stories of FEMA if I can ever meet up with him. I'm sure it's going to be easy enough to do that. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Chairman Venzel and Commissioners. I'm Jersey Piedmont from District 2, and I'd like to speak on just two quick points, if I may. We have an important millage renewal coming up in November for the Monroe County Community College. And I know that five of the eight of you signed Laura Perry's letter demanding certain criteria before that you would support the college's millage renewal. Not one of the five of you who signed this letter went to the August 7th Community College Special Meeting, where the board voted to ensure that the millage renewal would be put forward on the November ballot. In fact, only Chairman Venzel was at that meeting to speak, not as a commissioner, but as a lifelong educator in support of our college. I encourage all of you who were not there to listen to the recording of the August 7th meeting so you can hear those stories. It was a too rare and also deeply moving display of nonpartisan, or call it bipartisan, call it whatever you want, support for the college that cuts through this sensationalized and distorted fixation on one single issue. The stories from that night are a cause for local celebration from a wide array of perspectives. And if you really care about prosperity, vibrancy, economic and cultural opportunity for our community, please put the full weight of your support behind this important millage. And then, secondly, I'm concerned that in the meeting two weeks ago, the word transparency was used and may be weaponized in regards to the Mark Brandt issue. Again, I'm from District 2, where I still don't have a commissioner on this board. You need to get the job done in order to get to transparency. And please finish what has been started by adhering to your obligation to witness the confidential legal opinion that needs to be shared and needs to be heard in close session tonight. Then let us see you act as leaders and bring the people the results of this investigation. Thank you so much.
Are there any other citizens who wish to address the board? Seeing none, we'll move into resolution, special tributes and presentation. Item 1, presentation of the 2024 Monroe County Commission on Aging Annual Report by Mr. Jason Berry.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for this opportunity to speak on one of the best treasures of Monroe County, our senior millage and its commission on aging that oversees it. And I want to present to you briefly the annual report for 2024. My apologies in advance for the small print, but we had a lot of folks to get on here and a lot of programs as well. So you can see that the commission on aging is, at this point, operated by myself and Ramona. We oversee currently 34 different programs and with 19 different service providers throughout Monroe County. This is the language of the most recent primary for the senior millage that was done last year, and it had over 77% support for the senior millage. Now, in 2024, we broke a record, as we did in 2023, and we serviced, these are seniors, unduplicated seniors, that benefited from at least one service funded by the senior millage. 9,320 people in our county were serviced. That is an 8% increase from 2023. So we, within those 9,320 seniors, we processed 1.24 million service claims for these individuals. So a service claim would be an hour at a senior center, a meal, a transportation to a doctor's appointment and so on. 1.24 million. We brought in, from the local taxes, the revenue of 4.594 million. We kept the expenditures just under 4 million, which left us with a surplus of $609,850. And here's a little bit more of a breakdown of these numbers. But essentially, you can see that those property taxes and tax adjustments and so forth is what accounts for all the revenue. And again, my apologies for all the small print, but there is your 34 programs that provided services for our seniors in the county of Monroe. So we have quite an array of services. Our senior citizen activity centers, we have six of them in Monroe County, and they make up about 39% of the expenditures. The remainder, the remaining 61% would be home care, home chore, home injury. We have meals provided in, like, Berlins and Ash Township. Transportation, as I mentioned earlier, and just a number of different services. We're always on the lookout if there are gaps in services for senior citizens, barriers to getting those services. But we feel pretty confident with the direction of these services that are provided. Another thing I'd like to point out is that many of the programs, they exist to meet needs. We've seen an increase in seniors coming, going to the senior centers or to the senior meal groups, and they would tell us that it's to subsidize their high grocery bill. So we have, we have those available and we, through MCOPE, Bedford Vets, Vet Center, and next year will be the Aid in Mylan. We have groups that distribute pounds of food to seniors in need. I'd like to point out, though, as well, that we don't just focus on those folks that are in desperate need of things. We also focus on health initiatives. So we, the YMCA has a number of different programs for, one called Enhanced Fitness, and another one for cancer survivors to regain their health, and one starting next year, just a walking program to where seniors will gather and walk to different destinations throughout the county. So we're trying to meet needs, but we're also trying to provide services that will promote good health and happiness with our senior community. So as the year began, our fund balance was roughly $877,000. We did not need to use any of that due to, because of the increase in, or the revenue that came in, it was higher than expenditures. So as previously mentioned, that 609,000 got combined with the 877, so this gives our fund balance just under, well, 1.487. I will say that just approximately 400,000 of that is tied up into this year's budget. But, and we, we plan on using some of that to go into next year's 2026 Senior Millage. We do like to keep a, the commission on aging board and myself, we do feel comfortable keeping a, around a 20% fund balance. Primarily, you'll hear from board members to say that the uncertainty that exists with state and federal funds at this time is, justifies that. And so, but just be aware that we, we recognize that balance is there and we're going to, we're going to use it moving forward. As in one example of our, of our programs, one of my favorite programs, if I have to pick, is this one, but the United Way of Monroe. They serviced 22 people. They provided a ramp. These are seniors who didn't have the money and needed, desperately needed a ramp to get into their home. So they provided 22, 22 people. And you can see the average cost of the ramp was just under $5,300. So this was a direct, direct funded service. There's a picture of one crew that works, and you can see 14 of those ramps were in Monroe, one in Temperance, one in Newport, one in Maybe, Carlton, and Erie also got one. So just one of our more popular programs, they have a waitlist. It's the only program that has a waitlist, and it's simply because of a time factor, the seasons and the available contractors to assist with it. So I wanted to highlight one of those programs so that you had an example of the type of data we collect and one of the services we do or that we fund for the United Way to do. You can see in the bar graph that most of the recipients of this fund were in the ages of 75 to 79, and then the second highest was 85. So there's certain criteria and they have to meet in order to get this, but just a very popular and well, and much-needed program that our millage pays for. And that's it. So if you have any questions or anything, I'm happy to answer any that you may have.
Can I say something?
Yes.
I just want to say on behalf of me, very, thank you for the very impressive report you gave us. And then also, just a little while back, you had that care housing for folks out at Leroy Hall, and it was an outstanding program. And I was amazed how many suppliers there are in Monroe County that's got housing for seniors in Monroe County. Thank you for what you're doing for the county and for our seniors. We appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you for coming and other Commissioners who came, and then a number of you were talking with me about it. So, but thank you all for all of the events. I know every one of you have attended at one time or another one of the senior events. So we appreciate it very much. Commissioner Asper.
Yeah, I would like to, you know, comment as well on that, being there and just seeing how the community comes together. But I really, and this is yearly, so, I mean, people need to go to that. If you're a senior, you need to be there next year because there's all these vendors, there's all these resources. People have no idea the resources that we have in this county for seniors. And this time, it was about, you know, scams and how people try to scam elderly people and so forth. Great presentation. And then I came home with like three bags full of all these different things from the different vendors so that I can give them out to people in my area if they haven't gotten them. And it's just, and then our senior book, I don't know if you have one of those, but you have got to have our resources book. So we have them all kinds of different places, but if you have a senior in your household, that book is just invaluable. So thank you for all of that you do.
I want to balance it a little bit, because I looked at the number and it's impressive, the 22 ramps. But I notice, and I'm not diminishing it, it's great that those 14 families in Monroe benefit, but I also see a lot of zeros in the area that, over the years, I've expressed ongoing concern. Riga, none. Petersburg, none. Ottawa Lake, none. Deerfield, none. Lambertville, none. And I have, and I, we've talked about this, seniors in Whiteford Township not having access to transportation, these other things. I think Commissioner Asper makes an important note on the seniors' book for those resources because I'm sure that there are families in Whiteford that would benefit from the ramp that are unaware of those services and other things available. And again, I just, thank you for the good work you do, wonderful presentation, not to diminish that. But the same thing is the folks in Bedford and Whiteford are also paying their senior millage, and those folks deserve to receive the same benefits enjoyed by Monroe. And I just think, you know, being that our county seats here, these things, everything is networking, you know, word of mouth, I just would like the same effort. And I communicate this, but I'm only one person. So my challenge to the commission on aging is let the folks in Ottawa Lake and Petersburg and Riga and Lambertville know those things are available for their need too because they're seniors that want to age in place, they want to benefit from the home that they've, they've lived in, and they have their family and the rest, and they're not aware.
Yeah, I appreciate that challenge because that's, it's been in our strategic plan to do that outreach for all municipalities, for the townships, villages, and cities. And so one of the things we did as part of that initiative is I personally reached out to all the supervisors, presidents of the villages, and I personally invited them and the trustees to this caregiver and safety summit. And so that way, they would then, you know, at least, at least kind of have an idea of what's going on. And, but I'm happy to reach out to them and other outlets to get some information out.
Take a little screenshot, and next year, I want to see, you know, three ramps, and I want to see 28 in Monroe, but I'd like to see, you know, three in Erie, five in Ottawa Lake. I want, I want to see numbers.
Yeah, I will. We'll, we'll reach out to them for sure. And we'll see who, if anyone has a need for it, and we'll get them on that list. That's what happens. They, once they qualify, we get them on that list and they'll get to them. So. Anyone else?
I failed to ask for a motion ahead of his presentation. So if there are more questions, we'll entertain the questions, but we do need a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Lamoore, supported by Asper. Now, any additional comments or questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Heinzerling.
Yes.
Commissioner Lamoore.
Yes.
Commissioner Venzel.
Yes.
Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Commissioner Leavens.
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Yes.
Commissioner Asper.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next, under Finance Matters, a payment of the August 20, 2025, accounts payable, current claims report in the amount of $1,855,276.35. Could I get a motion ahead of the report, please?
Make the motion.
Second.
Moved by Hoffman, supported by Lamoore. Now we'll turn it over.
Good evening. On page number one, vendor number 70290, Gilroy's Hardware, Drain Project Costs Paid Through the Drain Commission. Vendor number 70954, Guardian RFID, Main Jail Inmate ID Cards. Page number two, vendor number 130851, Merck Human Health Clinic Supplies for the Health Department. Vendor number 131818, Mylan Area Historical Society, it's a museum grant for replacement of the fire barn windows. Page number three, vendor number 720776, Hunter Lawn Service, contractual lawn services provided at various county facilities. On page number five, vendor number 903819, Shoemaker Brothers, Drain Project Costs Paid Through the Drain Commission, and that's the end of my list.
Yes.
I have one question on page four. Vendor 750335, oh, no, 325. The individual there, John Gata, was one of the outliers when we had the ongoing concerns for the MIDC. And my understanding is they left the program, so I'm surprised to still see that name associated with 6,600 odd dollars. How is that, how is that vendor still on the list?
He is not on the MIDC list. He is on the probate court list.
Were the issues of concern from the MIDC list communicated to the probate court for, I mean, they may not know of the.
Yes, I believe that everybody's aware of that, yes. I can certainly double check if you'd like.
Please.
Yep.
Additional questions? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Lamoore.
Yes.
Commissioner Venzel.
Yes.
Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Commissioner Leavens.
No.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Yes.
Commissioner Asper.
Yes.
Commissioner Heinzerling.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, under Consent Agenda, item one, Approval of Non-Claims. Letter A, Check Register dated August 8, 2025, in the amount of $273,601.31. B, Check Register dated August 15, 2025, in the amount of $674,533.96. Could I get a motion, please?
Make the motion.
Moved by Leavens, supported by Heinzerling. Are there questions on the approval of non-claims? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Venzel.
Yes.
Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Commissioner Leavens.
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Yes.
Commissioner Asper.
Yes.
Commissioner Heinzerling.
Yes.
Commissioner Lamoore.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, under Communications, item one, Operations Committee, a report of the committee chairman from August 14, 2025 meeting. Item A is a letter dated August 5, 2025, from Jason Berry, Community Engagement Director, requesting the addition of a new commission on aging assistant position at an estimated cost of $85,682 effective January 1, 2026. Could I get a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Leavens, supported by Hoffman. Are there questions on this motion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Yes.
Commissioner Asper.
Yes.
Commissioner Heinzerling.
Yes.
Commissioner Lamoore.
Yes.
Commissioner Venzel.
Yes.
Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Commissioner Leavens.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item number two, under Communications, letter dated August 11, 2025, from Chief Deputy Michael Predmore, requesting permission to apply and accept the allocation award from the Secondary Road Patrol and Traffic Accident Prevention Program for the fiscal year 2026 in the amount of $257,491. The budget will require a match of $546,884. Could I get a motion on this?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Lamoore, supported by Heinzerling. Are there questions on this?
Mike's not here today, huh?
No.
I just had a question, and where that? Oh, Troy's here.
I'm probably your best source, please come to my office.
You're right. I just, so don't get the handcuffs out.
Don't give him a reason.
You what?
He uses flock now.
I didn't hear you.
He doesn't want you to get the handcuffs out.
And he might be close.
I was just looking into the funds there, if we had, if it was, it's going to come out of our budget, and I just wanted to make sure everything was.
It'll be in our 2026 budget. It's.
It's in your budget.
Yeah, well, obviously, our budget, you'll, you'll be approving our budget, but this is just a renewal every year. It's our 416, our Secondary Road Patrol funding, as it indicates. It's our traffic enforcement unit. They invest all, investigate all the fatalities. The state varies on their 416 funding. If you remember, every year, that was at the discretion of the legislator. We're happy to report that, we got that changed where it's automatically funding taken from the alcohol tax, and it's put in there. It's just it varies every year. Last year, there was an excess of 5 million, so our contribution was more last year than it is this year. But it'll be in our budget request, there's no change in that, so.
Thank you.
I'm glad you asked, that was.
Yes, to be official, while the sheriff's up, we had, at citizens' time, somebody wishes to speak with Chief Predmore. Can you make sure that happens, please, Sheriff?
I'll take care of that when we leave here. Additional questions? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Commissioner Leavens.
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Yes.
Commissioner Asper.
Yes.
Commissioner Heinzerling.
Yes.
Commissioner Lamoore.
Yes.
Commissioner Venzel.
Yes.
Motion carries.
We've got one more.
That's why I stayed, he had one more rather than me sit down in case there's questions. Yep. Item number three, a letter dated August 14, 2025, from Chief Deputy Michael Predmore, requesting confirmation of a port security grant application to the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, for a total award of $266,127.75. A county match of $88,710 would be required. Could I get a motion on this?
So moved.
So moved.
Moved by Lamoore, supported by Huffman. Now are there additional questions for Sheriff Goodenough?
Same question.
Yeah, so yeah, Commissioner Huffman, yes, that'll be, we get this grant every year. We have since the early nineties. And we'll put that in our twenty twenty-six, if you approve it. That's why we come to you first before we put it in our request for our budget. Hearing no other questions. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Levens?
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Commissioner Asper?
Yes.
Commissioner Heinzerling?
Yes.
Commissioner Lamoore?
Yes.
Commissioner Venzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item number four, a letter dated August fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five, from Mr. Chris Westover, requesting approval to accept the Eagle Materials Management Planning Grant Funds in the amount of one hundred and thirty-seven thousand, four hundred and four dollars and fifty cents, with no local match required. Could I get a motion on this?
Make the motion.
Oh, second.
Moved by Heinzerling, supported by Huffman. Are there questions on this motion? Mr. Westover is here.
Is there anything you'd like to say?
I would like to say that I presented this group a couple of times over the various phases of this. As Commissioner Heinzerling knows, he's on the committee. We've had to cancel how many of these, Commissioner? Four or five of them? Because until we get this, our work plan approved, which just happened, and then this board to give us the approval to accept the money, we couldn't do much work on it because we can't go backwards with pay. So once we get the approval here, we can start moving forward.
Any update on tires since you're here? How many tires you got?
Uh, yeah, I presented last time on tires. We had about, we, we collected about six thousand. Actually, in fact, I think I might have it in here. We collected in two thousand twenty-five, we collected six thousand fifty-two tires over our four events, which is pretty astounding, really. I think I said it last time. Where all these tires come from? But it's a lot. And people are very appreciative of that particular program.
Okay. Hearing no other questions. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Commissioner Asper?
Yes.
Commissioner Heinzerling?
Yes.
Commissioner Lamoore?
Yes.
Commissioner Venzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Levens?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item number five, a letter dated August thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five, from Mr. Jason Berry, Community Planning and Engagement Director, submitting the proposed updates to the Erie Township Master Plan for review and approval of the county planner's recommendations. Could I get a motion, please? Moved by Asper, supported by Lamoore. Are there questions on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Asper?
Yes.
Commissioner Heinzerling?
Yes.
Commissioner Lamoore?
Yes.
Commissioner Venzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Levens?
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item number six, agreement for sale and purchase of real estate buy-in between the city of Monroe, Michigan and the county of Monroe, Michigan. Could I get a motion?
Make the motion.
Second.
Moved by Heinzerling, supported by Lamoore. Are there questions on this motion? Yes.
I was wondering if they determined what type of development this would be, whether it was section forty-two or not?
Chairman, we do have Representative Sissi Monroe here if you'd like to question. That'd be great.
Perfect. Okay. Okay.
Commission?
Yeah. So these apartments and so forth, would they be section forty-two? Or are they just regular apartments that anyone could rent or?
Well, what they are is they aren't, they're not section eight housing.
No, not section eight, section forty-two.
I'm not sure what section forty-two is, but understand that this is still in the works. They still have to get their, their financing and their fiduciary. But I know what it was. It's based on income. And, and it's by percentage of income. And there's several different grades of income based on the number of apartments, number of bedrooms, et cetera, like that way.
Okay. I was just going to mention that the county, we actually voted that down a few years ago, if it is section forty-two, mainly because they require, like the subsidy isn't to the section eight person. Like, you know how they get those things that they can go around and get an apartment or whatever and have it subsidized? The subsidy goes to the developer. And so they require, depending on the income of the person, the, the person has to have, like there, you might require twenty percent of the rentals having to be for people who have an income of roughly forty to fifty percent of the average median income. So, and I don't know what the average median income of Monroe is, but those have to be set aside. And then another group that makes a little bit more, they have to set aside forty percent. So I just encourage you to look up section forty-two, if indeed that's the kind of development that it is. Because the renting homes that are around that area, because of the way it's subsidized, probably those landlords will probably lose their tenants. They'll just, you know, go in that sun. Especially if it's with, you know, stores and things like that. And what we're ending up doing is putting people in a situation where their living circumstances are about double what their income is. And so it's almost impossible for those people to move off of some sort of subsidy onto being self-supporting because it's actually disincentivizing it. Who is going to make five thousand dollars more or get a skill where they can make enough money when instantly they lose twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars of income of, of what they, you know, what they got in subsidies? So I would just, section forty-two.
Yeah, we'll, we'll keep our eye on that. We'll advise our council the same. Thanks.
Just, Mr. Levens?
This is for legal, when we had our agenda meeting, this came up, I mentioned for a reserved county right of first refusal if the city ever listed for sale. Was that included, Mr. Graham?
You know, I, I'm sorry. I'm not sure. Mr. Goldsmith worked on this.
We need to.
Then I would just preserve for the record to make sure going forward, whatever.
You, you wanted a, I think it is in there, to be honest.
A right of first refusal. I mean, just to keep it, because this is kind of on the periphery of our campus, I believe is the term we use now, for the joint city-county grounds. So probably it's going to be developed and it would never really be an exercisable option. But you never know what the future may foretell. And if it comes back up for sale, it would make sense that the county would have the, the first opportunity.
I will look into that, all right? These haven't been executed yet. And so I will look on, into that before they're executed. I'm sorry.
Well, then I just add the maker of the motion and, and supporter just to have that as an addendum to the motion to make sure that that right of first refusal is included with the motion, please.
Yes, yes, for sure.
Okay.
Just have one more question.
Commissioner Asper.
Is there, now, is there someone or a church that has an opportunity to purchase that before this transaction? Is there anything else involved in this?
That's actually involving the county. Your legal staff will have to talk about that.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
It's my understanding that there is a first right of refusal.
Okay.
And so that's what piqued my concern because I thought, well, it would only make sense then if we're vending it that we'd have the same option should that ever come about. So.
Okay.
I, I do appreciate that addendum. I think that would be wise for us if we wanted it in the future. I was just wondering, because nothing was included here for plots two oh three, two oh four, Wadworth, Navarre. How do we settle on the sale price of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars? I don't see appraisal. I don't see any type of valuation done by a broker. Where did that number come from?
There was an evaluation done by our assessor's office, along with Mr. Bassonic's office, that was back in twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, when the, when the deal was originally talked about. It was also, if it, it is whole and in part with your next item, which is the lease. It is for us to be able to use our, our city parking lot. We are leasing positions for thirty years for the county to, to have parking in our parking lot over the next thirty years.
So that, that's most likely, I would assume, why that's below market value then? Because we're going to get some benefit out of being able to lease the parking lot for a dollar a year for the next three hundred and sixty months?
Yes.
Okay.
VIP County Commissioner parking spots. It's going to be, it'll be the best parking spots ever.
I don't think we need any special treatment right now in the last eight months.
Additional questions for Mr. Robinson?
I, I think there's some supplement to that though as well. The ranges, as far as the income goes, are, are wide. I went to the presentation last night and it was stated clearly that if somebody came in, and this may help you a little bit with one of the questions you had. If somebody came in within that range and during that time went above that range, they would still be able to live there.
Actually, that was the problem that we had with it was because a person could come in with one, you know, say they have a husband and wife and only one of them works. Well, what the, what the stipulation was, was say the other one gets a job, you know, twenty, thirty, forty thousand dollars. They did not have to give up the equal amount of subsidy. Well, it's not to them, it's to the landlord. But as long as they didn't move to another unit, then they stayed qualified to, to be part of that twenty percent or forty percent, depending on what their average median income was. So that was actually kind of a problem for me because I think if somebody's getting a deal, so to speak, that, you know, if you could move in with the deal and then you could make who knows how much more money and still be qualified for it, it just doesn't seem like it's a, a really good way out of poverty.
I, I must took you then because I thought you were mentioning something to the effect that these people would not be motivated to seek better jobs or get better income.
Well, that's a little more complicated in that if a person makes a certain amount, they qualify for that housing. But what happens is their lifestyle goes up a lot more than that, like say twenty-five thousand. If they were just to make maybe a little bit more, like maybe five to ten thousand more, they lose all of that and they're not qualified anymore. And who, who has a family is going to do that? So it kind of disincentivizes getting more skills. I just want everyone to have the American dream and you can have the American dream in, in subsidized housing ultimately. So I, I guess I'm just looking for, you know, not disincentivizing people from, you know, from moving up, moving on up.
Certainly.
Don't they have, don't they have a re, re-sign up? Because I know I worked for section eight for fifteen years as a contractor.
That's how it's different. That's how it's different from section.
I was involved in this program too, but I was, if they see that, they have a re-qualification. Well, they'll see all them numbers and recheck them.
What we were told at that time was that unless you moved from one unit, um, one unit to another unit, that that was not reevaluated.
We need to look into that closer because I am pretty sure that you have to re-qualify.
And it's not our, it's not our decision. It's Monroe's decision. But I just wanted to let you look into it.
Obviously, our council always does their due diligence and before they're making the decision, especially as when we compare and we've done our housing studies. And we recognize the importance that not just within the city, but within, within the county, there is a housing shortage and a need for attainable housing at all income levels. And that's exactly the things that our city will, as, as this deal continues to develop after we retain its property. And this, this company still has to get their, their, um, their financing straight and get their, get their grants from MISTDA, et cetera. And once that's all through, then those details will be decided by our city council.
Yeah, this doesn't work with MISTDA if it's, if it's section forty-two because the people don't get a voucher. What happens is the developer gets the, they get the advantage from the, from the government. So it works differently. That's why I was mentioning it. But do you happen to know what the average median income is in Monroe?
Um, I believe it is, it's somewhere around fifty thousand dollars, fifty to sixty thousand dollars.
Okay.
In the city?
I believe.
Or in the county? Because in the county, it's a little higher.
In the city, because this would be in the city.
Yeah, I don't want to dwell on this too much, but yeah, those are two totally different programs. Eight is a direct assistance, obviously, and forty-two goes mostly, it mostly benefits the developer because they can set the rates in a percentage to what, if they're making a hundred, fourteen hundred dollar a month units, section forty-two says ten percent of those have to be at twelve hundred dollars. And then it kind of prices lower income people out. So it's actually the opposite argument of what, of what you're making too. People argue for it, but it ends up hurting the tenant because it prices them out. And essentially, the developer is the one getting the tax credit on it. But yeah, forty-two is a very popular program. I'm surprised you never.
Well, in extent, and obviously, we're just getting into these deals.
Sure.
We're, we're obviously just researching it. We just put out the RFP. We just received their bid. And they are awarded the bid at this point, but we still have a lot of due diligence to do as, as we move, move through this. So.
Thank you.
And our council will be well-advised. Thanks.
Thank you. Hearing no other questions. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Heinzerling?
Yes.
Commissioner Lamoore?
Yes.
Commissioner Venzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Levens?
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Commissioner Asper?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item number seven, parking rental agreement between the city of Monroe, Michigan, the landlord and county of Monroe, Michigan, the tenant. Could I get a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Lamoore.
Second.
Supported by Heinzerling. Are there questions on this motion?
Did we have an automatic renewal in there? I was looking at the lease. I saw the three hundred and sixty-month term. Hold on, I'm trying to scroll down to it. But I didn't see any first right of refusal or any type of automatic renewal if we opted as a county to do so? Was that in the lease? Do we know? Or was that discussed at all?
I didn't see that in the lease. It's a thirty-year lease for a, a dollar.
Mm-hmm. I'm just wondering what happens on the thirty-first year?
They, they, the two parties would have to get together and extend the lease or renegotiate it?
I didn't see any language in here that says in what timeframe we would have to renegotiate that. Was that stated? I mean, these are standard lease language. I don't know why that isn't in there.
Again, I didn't work on that, but it would become to the end of the lease in thirty years. If there's no other term on it, no notice requirements, then the two parties would have to start. I mean, I would assume they'd start talking about it ahead of time. But there isn't a time period put in the lease that I see.
Who wrote the lease? I mean, most of this is boilerplate, but some of this is obviously specific.
Yeah, I, again, I apologize. The two people that worked on the purchase agreement and the lease, Mike Bassonic, Phil Goldsmith, either one are here, just by.
So Commissioner Moore, what do you think would be a better term? I know for the, the fairgrounds, the county did a hundred-year lease.
Yeah, I'm not worried about the term. Thirty is fine. I'm just saying there's no option within a certain amount of time before it ends for us to renegotiate. Or, you know, I, look at, I probably won't be around in thirty years, definitely not here, hopefully. So it's going to be that board's issue.
It won't be a dollars anyway, probably.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, you know, in most standard leases, you have something that says you have the first right of refusal. You have the first right to renew. It has to be done within sixty days before the expiration date. I see none of that language. I was just wondering why it wasn't in there. That's all.
I think this was a thirty-year lease and, and that was it. And then, and so when you, when you talk about an extension, I mean, you could have an automatic right to an extension if you're a tenant? Or there wouldn't, I mean, that would have to be negotiated, I'm assuming. And so right now, I, you're right. I see a thirty-year lease, period. And so in practicality terms? Yes, the parties would start talking about it ahead of time and decide whether they want to extend it or not. But I have no problem in going back, now, now that I'm involved in this, I have no problem in going back, talking to the parties that negotiated this, both the purchase agreement for our right of first refusal for the county, which is not in there, and for the, the lease regarding whether or not. I'd have to think about whether it's an automatic extension right of the county, you know, whether the city would accept that or whether there's some notification period or whether it's going to roll over automatically, you know, like for a year at a time or whatever. That would, we'd have to, we'd have to negotiate that.
We have, we have the folks from the city here and maybe they could answer. I mean, would it matter? I mean, split the difference, have a, a fifty-year lease and make it someone else's problem when it's guaranteed that none of us will be here?
When the deal was originally discussed, we still owned two twelve Front Street, which is now owned by, and which, that contained that parking lot. That is now owned by the, the Barber College, a college of beauty. And we retained that parking lot. We did have exemption language that was in the original lease that we provided to the county. And in that lease, we had said, okay, well, at thirty days' notice, we could, you know, because that time we didn't know if we were going to sell that or not. And if we did have a different buyer that required that stuff, we needed to have something in there. And what else the city, what other thirty-two spots we would provide to the county within, uh, within their proper walking distance and all that. All that language is in there and it was actually removed by your legal staff and Mr. Bassonic Bissoni that said they didn't want that language in there. So we took that language out.
So.
So it's a thirty years.
Excuse me for interrupting. Again, I'm at a loss here because I didn't work on it, but I can talk about this with Mr. Bissoni and Mr. Goldsmith and counsel for the city if necessary and see just what the history is on this. Like he says, apparently it was vetted, it was talked about.
In the discussions between myself and Mr. Bissoni, it was basically, okay, if we're going to take this out, then obviously at the end of the lease, we would renegotiate and see what the issue is. I mean, currently, right now, more than thirty-two people park currently in that parking lot from the county on a daily basis. This was simply, we are reserving it if we need to mark them differently, if we need to preserve them, give them a special pass so that, because there's probably eighty to ninety parking spots within that parking lot. So, but we were guaranteed the thirty-two.
Yeah, my only qualm about that was, you know, in thirty years, that footprint might be valuable to both the city or the county. And I'd like to see, if I'm representing the county in this lease, if I were the broker with this and I was representing the county, I'd say, oh, no, we'd want to see some type of renewal in there to have first right of renewal. Most of the time, if you're doing a commercial lease, a five plus five or a five plus two or something that says we'll give you the first look, it would be to your benefit for it not to be in there because the next day, you know, year thirty, it turns over to you and you go, awesome, we've got this space and we can do whatever we really kind of want with it. I was just thinking from the county perspective, I think it might be smart to have renewal in there, but it, I mean, it really won't hold me up on the vote either way. I was just wondering why it wasn't in there.
Mr. Chairman, would it be possible to postpone this since it's not urgent? It's not like, it's not like the space, we'd have to approve it tonight, but that postpone it until our next meeting because in that amount of time, I would think that you could have that conversation and then we could be clear about it?
Well, we have worked this and it is kind of urgent because there is a deadline for the person who secured the bid needs to have their grant in before the end of September in order for that to be, to, for them to meet their deadlines in order to secure their financing for the forty-six unit development.
Plus the purchase agreements and the lease have contingencies with dates at the end of this month.
Would it be a deal breaker for the city to modify the thirty-year term to fifty years? And I'm seeing Mark Cochran in the back shaking his head no. So would the maker of the motion and the supporter agree to modify the thirty-year term to fifty?
Yes.
Sure.
All right. And that's fine, but now we would still have to go back to our council because they voted to these things yesterday. They voted in support of both of these agreements as written yesterday.
Then I withdraw.
I would leave it as is.
I withdraw.
Thank you.
Okay, so I think we're ready to vote. Correct? Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Lamoore?
Yes.
Commissioner Venzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
No.
Commissioner Leavens?
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Commissioner Asper?
No.
Commissioner Heinzerling?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item number seven, parking lot, is that where we're at? No, we're done.
We just finished that one.
We're now moving into closed session and we have two closed sessions tonight. And I, it's been recommended to me that we vote on both closed sessions and then separately. But by doing that, the members of the public would know that, they wouldn't have to come back in after the first closed session, let us go back into open and then go back into close. Is that correct, Mr. Graham?
Yes, yes. It's really to make it more convenient for the public. So we would have two separate motions, one for the first, you know, and we'd go through that and decide up or down, and then we would vote on the second unless there's some other action to be taken on the first at that time. And then when we came out of closed, we would go from one closed session to the other without reopening to the public. And then after both closed sessions or one, whichever, whatever we have, come back in, we'll deal with both after we come in on the, you know, in public session. Just more convenient for the public.
Okay.
Two motions though.
Okay, so.
And of course, you know, we need six votes on both motions.
Okay, so our first closed session request would be a closed session to discuss confidential legal opinion pursuant to MCL fifteen-point-two-six-eight-H. Could I get a motion for that?
So moved.
Moved by Lamoore, supported by Hoffman. Any questions on this motion? Now, what I would like to do, I'll take questions, but I would like our council to come up and address the board too. Go ahead, Commissioner Asper, do you have questions?
Yes. So this information, we couldn't just receive that information as opposed to discussion in closed session?
The memorandum, is this on? Okay, yes, thank you. The memorandum that you received from me is a confidential legal opinion, so I can't discuss the contents of that in an open session.
No, I wasn't asking you to discuss it, but I was meaning so that that information cannot just be given to us in a statement for us to review. It has to be discussed in a closed session. I'm not talking about it being in public or anything like that, but I mean, just, just like you gave us that letter, the, your results could be reported that way. I'm trying to be very careful.
I know you are. I know you are. No. No. Not until you have contemplated the contents of the memorandum.
Is there a general statement you would like to give that would be allowable prior to us going in or asking for the vote?
Certainly, certainly. So first of all, I just want to say thank you for entrusting me and my firm with this incredibly difficult task. It has been an intriguing and interesting endeavor. I'll say that. Work has been done. Witnesses have been interviewed. There have been at least thirty individuals who have been interviewed. I can tell you that. My endeavor tonight is to not enter into closed session to reveal to you or to discuss with you the factual information that has been gleaned thus far in the investigation. Rather, my request is threefold to you tonight. One, I want to discuss with you the contents of my confidential legal opinion, and I can only do that with you as a group in closed session. I want to provide to you during that closed session the opportunity to ask me questions about the legal opinion so I can ensure that all of your questions are answered and that you understand what the legal opinion is with regard to my memorandum. And then when you come out of closed session, after being fully and legally advised as it pertains to my memorandum, I need, I would like for you to take, to entertain a motion that would guide my next steps in the investigation. And I don't believe that you should do that until you have digested the contents of the memorandum.
Okay.
And so I feel like I can't, I can't move forward at this point without guidance from you and I can't, I need that, I need you to digest the memo, ask me questions about the memo. And so then when you give me that guidance, you're fully advised as to what you're undertaking.
Okay, and just to be clear, what I was talking about with the statement was written statement. I wasn't asking you to make a verbal statement, so, just so you understand.
Any other questions on the motion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Commissioner Asper?
Yes.
Commissioner Heinzerling?
Yes.
Commissioner Lamoore?
Yes.
Commissioner Venzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
No.
Commissioner Leavens?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, well, now, I'll now ask for a motion regarding the request for closed session, item number two, a closed session to discuss class action settlement, class action case settlement and property tax foreclosure litigation.
Second.
Moved by Leavens, supported by Lamoore. Jesse's here to entertain any questions.
Yes, I am waiting on my attorney to arrive for this. He had to be in court in Midland or Bay County. So he's on his way here. So if we're going into first closed session, I assume you'll boot me out and then have me and the attorney come in afterwards, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Attorneys are terribly im punctual.
Any other questions on this motion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Leavens?
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Commissioner Asper?
Yes.
Commissioner Heinzerling?
Yes.
Commissioner Lamoore?
Yes.
Commissioner Venzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, well, now move into closed session.
Yep, no, you are, okay.
So I muted the microphone and I think that...
Okay.
Okay.
Then just give me a thumbs up when I can make a motion.
Motion to go back in open session, Mr. Chairman?
By leaving, supported by Lamore.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Commissioner Asper?
Yes.
Commissioner Heinzler-Ling?
Yes.
Commissioner Lamore?
Yes.
Commissioner Venzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Levens?
Yes.
Motion carries.
First motion, Mr. Chairman, pursuant to the first item of closed session pursuant to MCL 15.268H is the motion to continue the investigation with
to MCL 15.268H is the motion to continue the investigation with full support of the county staff and employees with an additional retainer not to exceed $20,000.
Second.
Moved by Leavens, supported by Lemoore. Are there questions on the motion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Commissioner Asper?
No.
Commissioner Heinzlerling?
Yes.
Commissioner Lemoore?
Yes.
Commissioner Venzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
No.
Commissioner Leavens?
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
On to the next item, Mr. Chairman, concerning the closed business to discuss the Arcona et al litigation, I make a motion to conditionally approve the settlement agreement in the Arcona litigation if and only if outside council continues to believe after consultation with the county treasurer that the adoption of the settlement remains in the best interest of the county after entry by the court of an order of preliminarily approving the settlement.
I'll suck at that.
Moved by Leavens, supported by Hoffman. Are there questions on this motion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Commissioner Heinzlerling?
Yes.
Commissioner Lemoore?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Venzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Leavens?
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Commissioner Asper?
Yes.
Commissioner Heinzlerling?
Yes.
Commissioner Lemoore?
Yes.
Commissioner Venzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Leavens?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We'll now move into the next section of the agenda. We have no public hearings, any old business, any new business. We'll now move into the second segment of public comment, are there citizens that wish to address the board? Seeing none, we have no announcements, we'll now move into members' time, I'll start with Commissioner Moore.
Pass.
Commissioner Lemoore?
Great to see that the trail is progressing very well right now, out on North Custer and all the other places out by the fairgrounds and up and down Seventh Street, so it's looking good.
Wonderful.
A lot of people are using it, it's not even completed yet.
Excellent. Commissioner Heinzlerling?
Pass.
Commissioner Asper?
I just am so appreciative of the report tonight about how the seniors in this county are taken care of because it just really, it helps families so much, the individual and the families, and so I just appreciated that report from Jason.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Yeah, I'm not going to say much because we've had a long meeting, but I'm working with the reps up in Lansing on a House joint resolution, and everybody's got a copy of it so far, I do have copies if anybody in the public wants them, and I'll get more into this next meeting. That's it. Thank you.
Vice Chair Leavens?
I echo Commissioner Asper's comments, and I look forward to the seniors in West County receiving a little more outreach and benefiting from services likewise because it has been a historically underserved community as far as senior services in our county. Thank you.
And I'll pass, so this meeting is now adjourned.
Sounds like an opportunity for a town hall.
Have a good one.
Good job.